Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the special city council meeting of May 28, 2020 to order. Please take a roll call.
Becken.
Kirk.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Johnson. Leo.
Here.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Louis. Peterson.
Here.
Here.
Truster.
Here.
Burplank.
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
Monica, did you get everyone?
Yes, I'm set.
I'm sorry, I'm experiencing some audio delay here, so I hope that doesn't interfere with things. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 26. Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Mayor, there was some suggested corrections to the minutes, so I'm gonna try to put those up on the screen.
Thank you.
Councilmember Louis had some suggestions, so I'll let her discuss what is, and then council could amend it.
Okay.
All right, very good. I went back and, after reading our minutes, I went back and listened to the recording to make sure that I recalled as I had thought I had recalled it. And basically, I have indicated here on this note that the city manager has posted up that at one hour and 34 minutes into the conversation, council member Johnson recommends that a motion be weighed or that a proposal be tabled until the next meeting. At that time, I took the initiative at 1:35 and 10 to move to call a special meeting of the city council for this Thursday to move forward on discussion and decision regarding this proposal. Chris Peterson did second it, but was not heard, and she indicated it as such at 1:3622 that she had seconded that motion. So I would like that reflected in the minutes, please.
So, would you make a motion, Barry?
Well, since our parliamentarians on the line, he can indicate to us the proper procedure for this.
Barry?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the certain date with the with the correction that, you know, it's all there in that text there that we're all seeing, and Monica can incorporate that into the minutes. So my motion is to approve the minutes as corrected.
Your second?
Second.
I'll second.
I believe Holly was there first, so moved by Johnson, seconded by Holly to approve the minutes as amended. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, as corrected.
I am corrected. Any discussion?
Johnson.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Becken.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
Burplank.
Yes.
The minutes are approved as corrected. We'll skip the mayor's comments, city manager comments?
No comments.
Any agenda changes to be proposed? Chris, are you raising your hand?
No, sorry. Just put it up there.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to, there are no guest speakers. We will move to public comment on the agenda items. If you wish to make a comment, please signal your intent, and we'll try and call on you. If you're on the phone, you need to press star nine to be recognized. Anyone wishing to make a comment? All right, hearing none. There are no requests for payment, no ordinances to introduce, no public hearings, and no unfinished business. We'll move to the line item of new business today, the downtown pop-up patio dining and the right-of-way permit or license. Kirk or Cindy, would you care to introduce this?
Cindy, Cindy will introduce it for you.
Okay, Cindy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did make a couple of changes to your original proposal that I had done on Tuesday, and those are highlighted in this memo. And the idea is to allow for the pop-up patio-type restaurant extensions in the city parking lot and in the parking spaces in front of restaurants and bars. This is just a procedure that you can approve the staff to administer, and that way it can be addressed more quickly than if they had to wait for another council meeting to get it approved. So on the second page, this is a use of part of the parking lot for scooters and grow and local burrito and any other general public seating for, that might get takeout restaurant food in a place for them to sit and eat. Like to point out another change that I've made in the process. Number one says to comply with all federal, state, and local regulations to include executive orders from the governor. There's some con, there's some idea that once we approve a pop-up patio that gives permission for a restaurant to be open, and that is not the case. Restaurants cannot be open until the governor says they can be open. So we're not giving anybody special permission that somebody else doesn't have, but seating in the parking lot not associated with a particular restaurant for takeout could be done rather quickly. I would point out for that, we would need to have a person designated for a contact who is responsible for keeping the area clean and tidy and taking care of the trash. That's about the only comment I have about that page. On the next page, we talk about the pop-up patios and parking spaces in front of restaurants and bars that have sit-down indoor table service on all streets except Culver. Culver Street is extremely congested on a good day, and if we put in pop-ups on Culver Street, that will just make it more difficult to get access. That doesn't mean they're excluded from participating in this, but we, the committee plans to meet with merchants on Culver Street and try to understand what their needs are, and come, will come back with another proposal to accommodate them. So it's, and we would like to change that a little bit to say, this is per parcel. You don't get to have two pop-ups because you have two businesses on the same parcel. So just to clarify that, I want to add per parcel to that text. The other thing I would like to point out was that you can use benches as barriers or fences. There's a lot of other types of barriers than building a big planter pot. And since they have to be removed every night to accommodate the, the street sweeping and the early morning delivery trucks, they probably shouldn't be so unwieldy that you can't move them. Other things that could be used would be, could be planters, just regular purchased planters, something to provide a visual signal that you can't drive here, you can't put a car here. Tables and chairs probably will do, do a good job, but I don't think that a little plastic chain, not that anything is gonna stop a car from running over it, but a little plastic chain might not provide the visual cue that there's something there. The parking areas, previously I had put in the number six, not more than three parking spaces. That, that was a little bit ambiguous because parking, parking places are not all exactly the same size, and sometimes they might have one half of a parking space in front of one business, and the other half is in front of a different business. So I changed that to read 60 feet wide, and that is the length, the approximate length of about three parking spaces. Parking spaces are usually 20 feet long. Umbrellas and shade could be used and tied to a tree, not nailed to a tree. And that is about all I have for the pop-ups. That's different from what we talked about last time. Is there any questions about that?
Well, Cindy, also too, we, I think we talked about hours of operation. There were, were some concerns from some members of the community about having maybe possibly live music or other loud type events out in that area. So Cindy was gonna work in a reasonable hours of operation too, so it doesn't, it's not unlimited. Also, we have Ms. Rebecca Long from the Allen County Health Department. She's on this meeting as well, and I'm wondering if she has any, might wanna, I don't wanna put her on the spot, but if she has any input or suggestions or any concerns, we might wanna give her an opportunity to speak if it's okay, Mr. Mayor.
That would be fine.
Rebecca, are you on the, on the line there?
Yeah, I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Okay, we sure can.
Okay, um, I, I read over this, and it looks like it's very well thought out. My only concern, and it's not something that's addressed, is, is there going to be a schedule for cleaning and disinfecting these areas, these seating areas? Is that something that's gonna fall upon the business, or is it something that is gonna be put forth by the city?
Go ahead, Cindy.
That will be the business operator's decision to make what they're going to do. Of course, they want to comply with all the county health department concerns, and I imagine that would be part of their inspection or license.
Okay, thank you. I really, I think that, other than that, everything seems very well thought out, and for us, I think it meets what we are trying to put forth, so I have no other comments at this time.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca. Cindy, anything more?
Unless anybody has questions about the pop-ups or the process or the procedure, the proposed motion is, answers the question, do you want to have pop-ups? And if you do, do you want the city to administratively issue the permits? So that's that concept. Other than that, the only the only thing is the sidewalk sale.
I mean, the sidewalks, yeah, okay. You wanna speak to that now?
Unless somebody has questions.
Yes, Ms., yeah. Go ahead, Holly.
No, you go ahead, Garnet.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet.
Go ahead.
All right, I have a couple of questions. So Cindy and I, I know there are so many issues that we're still trying to figure out, so help me noodle through this. So let's say that a customer gets takeout from a restaurant. That restaurant has tables on the sidewalk, because we've given them approval to use the sidewalk as long as it doesn't interfere with the right-of-way. Would it be legit for a person to, included in their takeout, have an alcoholic adult beverage and take that and sit down at the table if they had MLCC approval?
Yes, it would be if they, if they have the MLCC approval. In order to get that approval, one of the documents they have to submit is permission from the city to do, to do that.
Okay, and would you recommend then that that is shared with our Allegan Sheriff's Department or posted or something so that that they're aware of it? How would you recommend that they kinda be proactive on that one? Sorry. These are the, these are the questions that are gonna come up, so.
I didn't really consider, other than just letting the sheriff's department know that the city has approved it, and they will get a copy of the pop-up permit, and it will indicate whether or not alcohol is included.
Okay.
Chris?
Yeah, we had this discussion today, and if I remember, Cindy, it was they had to sit down and be served, that they couldn't get takeout and carry the booze out.
They can't get takeout booze out.
So your question, Garnet, is not quite accurate. You can't take out, okay, so they have to sit down, be served. In addition, we talked about having signs that say, "No alcohol beyond this point."
Got it. All right. So, and I guess I, I, yeah, so that, I just wanna make sure that we're correct on that one. The second question I have is, with the Culver Street establishments, I know that we have a couple of restaurants on Culver and a couple establishments, but retail businesses, but we have Coast and Bodie specifically on Culver. Will they be able to use the parking spaces out front of their establishments?
Not initially, because of the congestion and the traffic.
All right, what a, that's really crowded.
And the committee will be meeting with everybody on Culver Street to determine what their needs are.
All right, and then I get my follow-up to that, if, thinking that that was what you were gonna tell me. Could they then use the parking spaces on Griffith instead?
Grow.
And grow as well, grow and.
Grow could use the parking on, well, they can't get the MCL, MCLL license or MLCC license because the outdoor serving space has to be within 25 feet of the licensed establishment. So that would make that very challenging. They could have food service, but they couldn't have alcohol.
Okay. Okay.
Very good. Is that it?
Yeah, I think that's enough for me.
I, I had a couple of questions. Cindy, would it be possible for a barrier, like, you know, those, like, four-foot palm trees they sell at Lowe's, something like that, like a row of plants? Is that, would that be accessible?
Something that's substantially visible, and anybody could propose anything. And if I thought it was substantially enough of a visible, that's kind of the point. That's also the lighting after dark. If you're gonna be open after dark on your patio, how is traffic going to avoid you? So you would need to put some kind of lighting to identify that. For the hours of operation, I thought about that quite long and hard. I don't think that anybody wants to use their limited outdoor space to set up a band. They might have some music, but that should all be finished by 10 o'clock. To close your, your patio at an hour that's less than what your inside hours are would be a heavy burden to move all that stuff off the street. Sorry you were closed, pick people off your deck, you know, you can't, sorry, can't sit outside anymore. Would be quite burdensome. So as we do this initial trial test, we'll see if there's any any problems, you know, we can identify them as they come up, but we want to be just about as liberal as we can.
Okay, so, so they could like have a guy playing a guitar. Say Wicks Park just has a guy playing a guitar, that's permissible.
Till 10 o'clock.
Till 10 o'clock. Okay, and then I have another question about the Culver Street businesses. I just, I wonder why we have, I, do we have like a traffic study or something? Have we determined that it's so much worse on Culver than it is on Butler, than it is on Griffith? Or, I don't know, it just seems like it penalizes those businesses? And what, what can those businesses do if they can't use a pop-up patio? What, what are their options?
Well, I think that Bodie's is probably the most impacted because they don't have any outdoor areas that they can place tables and chairs. They don't own the parking lot that's behind them. They don't own the easement that's along the edge. So they are really limited, but this really is a very, very congested area, especially when you get traffic backed up at the stop signs and the stoplight. And then you have bicycles and pedestrians, it's just really tight there. And I think that's the, the, that's gonna have to have some consideration by the, by the committee. When cars are parked there, it's tight. I would hate to see somebody get hurt because of patio, and I think the committee has to sit down with the owners and talk about what they want and what the options are. Give it a little bit more thought. I don't think we're just ready for that yet.
Thank you.
Mark?
Okay, thank you. Several, several items, please, clarification, Cindy. You're going to be the, you're going to give approval for the barricades. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It will be a permit with a complete application and submitted information.
Good, so as long as we know that that is where the approval process is gonna come from, the barricades. Another, the outdoor music till 10 o'clock, is that not in conflict with our existing ordinance? It says outdoor amplification of music has to cease at 11 p.m. I believe we have ordinance like that.
Mark, yeah, I'll jump in. Yeah, we do have that, Mark, and, and basically this would be a special permit, so you can put, additional, you can put requirements on this that are above and beyond what the normal ordinances.
All right, as long as that's, that's out there for, you know, we're, we're aware of that. I had a question, I think Barry also had this, this question. Is these areas where the pop-up patios will be, once the property owner moves them off to the side to open the street, how are we gonna control parking in the morning? For instance, I'll be right on it, Wally's is a good example because it has the coffee shop across the street. In fact, he's the one who posed the question, at least to me, and, you know, I thought, I suppose we could provide them no parking signs that they could put along there after they remove their, their, you know, parking by police order. They seem to work when we have special events, but Cindy, I think that's something you have to be aware of.
Yes, I was, I did think about that, and I think that that is the best idea is to put no parking signs where we can, and where we can't, we'll have to think of a different way to put a sign, perhaps, with a, a small base, a portable sign that can be placed there. But yeah, it's something that we're gonna have to work out for every single, every one of these is gonna be unique. But I, I agree, we need to do something about the parking.
All right, and my last comment is more in line with Bodie's and Coast Restaurant. I hope we can work something out to accommodate them. I feel that the Culver Street traffic headed west seems to kinda dissipate a bit at Griffith Street, where you have a four-way stop. And since that, those restaurants are located on the westbound side, it may not be as big an issue, so I hope we look at that a little bit further if those two properties actually wanna participate in a pop-up pimp.
Yeah, I agree that they need, we need to figure out what they want and what's, what's possible. I don't think we've done enough homework there. That's, that's my issue.
Yep. Other than that, you know, I'm, I'm all done, thanks, Ken.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So you're not ruling out any pop-up patios in that area. You need to do a little more research, that, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet again. I have a quick follow-up question, Cindy. I think this is more to be considered, I think, when you all meet again. So what happens if somebody gets takeout from another restaurant and walks down the street and decides they wanna sit at the table at Wally's, and they have their own adult beverage? Wally's has an MLCC license, but that person did not purchase that takeout there nor that beverage there.
My understanding from reading the, the papers on the website from the MLCC that one of their requirements of the barriers is to help prevent that exact thing from happening. They have to, they have to consume where they buy.
Got it, got it. Okay. Perfect.
So that would probably be worked out by having a seating in that area. I can't imagine in the middle of the summer you could walk into Wally's and just sit down. So that'll be that seating. And we have discussed in the committee to, to contact those businesses, that's our next step, on Culver Street, and work with them on some solution. We just didn't have an immediate solution for that, and we wanted to include all of them as, even the business owners that don't serve alcohol and are not restaurants. So we wanna look at that whole area for what we can do for them to help them with their business. That's the uniqueness of Sagatuck, is every area is different, and it's very difficult to set up a one-size-fits-all for everybody. So that's our next step, is to meet with those people, and hopefully we can put something together the first of the week to meet with them and discuss this.
This is Garnet again, and if I might be so bold, Elizabeth on the call, we might wanna utilize her because she has such a great connection with all those business owners, whether they're a restaurant or retail, through the efforts of the Sagatuck Douglas stuff. She's had numerous Zoom meetings with them, so she could probably pull that, that group together very easily for you and save you a lot of time.
Hey, Barry, you have to be recognized? Barry? I'm not hearing you. Barry?
Sorry, my bad. Thank you, Garnet, a great suggestion that, moving forward to get some of our experts involved. I just wanted to make a clarification, since we've got 45 people on this meeting, that the MLCC is, stands for the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, who regulates bars, restaurants, et cetera. And they do their, their rules by some administratively and some have to go through the legislature. And it's my understanding that there is a fast-track, and I don't know if it's legislative or administrative, I think it's legislative.
Legislative.
Yep, so this, what's being fast-tracked is legislative, so we can, we're getting ahead of the curve, but we still have to wait to get that legislation done to allow a lot of the things that we're wanting our people to do. So it's, it's want everybody to know, we use a lot of acronyms, Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Thank you. Other questions? So then I would enter. So then I would entertain a motion that's been suggested here, Chris?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to allow staff to administratively issue permits for the pop-up patios with or without alcoholic beverages as described slash amended in the attached documents effective immediately through October 30th, 2020, and allow the staff to administratively approve the tentative sidewalk sale for June 19th, 2020, assuming the stay-at-home order is lifted.
Your second.
Jane's second.
All right.
All right, it's been moved in seconds, more discussion, questions?
I have another question.
Mark?
So they can put up the pop-up patios tomorrow, even though, what are you shaking your head Jane, maybe the way I read it, says effective immediately.
Effective immediately is for the processing of the permits.
Is that what this says? There's, I'm mis- misreading this motion.
It does say issue.
Issue.
It should say process.
Well, the plan is to issue the permits for those who want it, they'll be able to install their pop-up patios when the stay-at-home wa- order is lifted, is that your intent?
That's, that's my intent.
All right, good, just want to clarify that, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Holly, you're almost a tie, so Holly, why don't you go first?
I just had a question, we haven't talked about the sidewalk sale, and I'm, I'm just wondering, obviously that will have to, to, I'm just curious how we're gonna handle that from gather, having such a big public gathering. I'm not really sure how we're gonna be able to do that, or I'm a little concerned about that.
Point of order, I, I know you hate when I do this, but that's not germane to this motion, which is about the pop-up patios. It's certainly a topic that deserves discussion and action. But this is not germane to this motion.
So, point of clarification, yeah, this is Garnett, I thought it was, the motion, if you'll read it, is read all the way through and through October 30th comma, and allow the staff to administratively approve the tentative sidewalk sale for June 19th, 2020, assuming the stay-at-home order is lifted, that's included in the motion. There it is, right there.
But it says pop-up patios.
And?
And it doesn't.
And allow.
So I'm, I'm a little, a lot of the question, go ahead Holly.
Well, that's my question, so Cindy, if you could just, or if, if anybody has knowledge of, or Jane, or Chris, or, I mean, I'm just kind of wondering what, what we're, our thoughts are, or what? Give me some guidance or some ideas of what you guys are thinking.
Ken, can, can I jump in maybe as the manager here? So I think I understand probably what Councilmember Leo is, is mentioning is that, you know, we've had the majority of not all of our special events have been canceled by the event organizers.
Right.
They've been doing that proactively because the health officials at the state and federal levels have been trying to discourage any kind of, you know, events that encourage people to congregate. And I think that's probably the issue really, and we've been, we've been lucky so far because most of these special events have been proactive and have simply canceled the event, the city council has not had to actively take a position and cancel an event that was scheduled. So I think this issue is kind of, to the point of, okay, if we're gonna approve a sidewalk sale, is that encouraging people to congregate? Even though that you may have, you know, the booths may be spaced out, but is that really what the city wants to do in terms of encouraging people to come and congregate into large areas? I don't want to speak for Councilmember Leo, but I, I think that's what she was saying, and I think she's probably correct that we, we probably need to, we don't really have a position right now at the city council, is that something that we want to be considered of and not encouraged, so that's my thoughts.
Kirk, you said that beautifully, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Barry?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I want, I owe an apology to everybody. That part of the motion was blocked on my screen by everybody that's here, I got this big ribbon of people on the bottom of my screen, and I did not see that, and I apologize.
Very well. Chris, please.
Welcome to a friendly amendment, if we wish to go forward with that. Take out the, take out the sidewalk sale information.
And also, Ken, I'm, I'm gonna jump right in real quick, sorry, but the, um, this, the annual sidewalk sales have already been canceled by Sadaba too, so it might look a little odd if they cancel their sidewalk sales and then the city starts another one, so that might be something just to take up at a later time and see if, to handle it in a future date.
Another, another thing we could do, Mayor, if I may, another thing we could do is I know we've talked about two different dates for sidewalk sales, and we talked about, I think, an August date, and maybe what we should do is see how things go and the sort of direction, I mean, we, we seem to have more clarity week by week. So it, it might be something that we would like to move towards, but it seems, it seems a bit soon. And, and especially for, it's something that the city, as Kirk said, if it's something that the city would be sanctioning, so.
Yeah, well, in the way the motion is worded, the administrative staff still has the ability to say yea or nay on the sidewalk sale on the timing of June 19th, and as things move along, council is gonna have a chance to have input into that as well, so I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the wording the way it is.
All right, Mr. Mayor, this is Garnett, I have one more question for Cindy.
Yeah, go ahead.
Cindy, I know you're really good at this and you've probably already done this, but we're, we're ensuring that somewhere it's stated for everybody in these permits that the social distancing protocols are still in place, correct? Six feet, all that kind of stuff?
It did not specifically mention all the protocols because they change so often, I just mentioned that you have to be in compliance with the executive orders from the governor.
Wonderful, thank you, thanks.
And?
Mark?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with your statement about the sidewalk sales, it does say tentative, so that gives you the option to postpone it, do whatever you want with it without wording. Also, keep in mind, we're, city's gotten pretty good at sidewalk sales for all the many years that we put them, I assume that's going to be the template for the next sidewalk sale that we would, that would be.
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
Barry?
Uh, yes, you know, I'm really agreeing with where it's going, but in reference to Chris's possible amendment to take that paragraph or that part of it out, it takes the burden off of Cindy, so if there's a bad, you know, actors, it's us and not Cindy, that, you know, that she has the burden to make that decision, whereas we do amend it and take it out, that takes the burden off of her, and again, as I agree with Holly, we need to talk about that more. I'm just looking to take the burden off of Cindy on this.
Mr. Mayor, I just want this to go through smoothly, and if there's any chance that this is gonna cause hassles, let's just get rid of it for now and bring it back at another time, that's why I said I just, I welcome a friendly amendment to stop after October 30th, 2020, let's keep it smooth and keep moving forward.
I support that, this is good.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Well, then somebody's gotta make the, the, introduce an amendment.
Go Barry.
Whoever made the motion, I guess.
Do I have my own friendly amendment?
Chris? Chris?
Yes, do I just? I'm sorry, what?
Barry, hang on a minute, Chris?
Chris has the floor.
Okay.
I withdraw my amendment and then read, I withdraw my motion, and then, Mr. Mayor, a new motion?
Yes, does a second or, with, agree to withdrawing the motion?
Yes, I withdraw my second and will bow to Chris to make a new motion.
Very well, Chris?
Barry, is that the, okay?
You know, we have to vote on that, but you know, it's easy, amendments are a very widely-used tool to make good motion better or a bad motion more palatable. And all we have to do is just amend this, to strike that out, and that becomes part of the motion.
Please do it.
That's the clean way to do it.
Barry should do it.
Barry, just do it.
Make the motion, Barry.
Okay, I have the floor, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to strike the sentence that starts with and allow the staff to administratively approve sidewalk sale June 19th, 2020, assuming the stay-at-home order is lifted.
Second.
Second by Jane? Okay, moved by Johnson, second by, for Plank, to end the motion to strike the last verdict. Is there, is there a discussion?
Uh, that takes a two-thirds vote.
All right, okay. No discussion, then let's do a roll call, Monica?
Johnson?
Yes.
For Plank?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Cruster?
Yes, so the amendment is approved, and now we go back to the motion as amended. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject again, so when we get ready to vote, you need to state the motion and then say as amended, and so that everybody knows what we're voting on.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, then we will take a roll call vote on the motion, the motion to allow staff to administratively issue permits for the pop-up patios with or without alcoholic beverages as described, amended in the attached documents, effective immediately through October 30th, 2020, period. Mark, would you take the roll, please?
Johnson?
Yes.
For Plank?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Cruster?
Yes. The motion is approved.
Nice.
Thank you. There was no consent agenda, so we'll go to public comments one more time, if anybody wish, who's on here wishes to make a comment, please identify yourself. You will need to press star nine if you're just calling in. If that's the case, you have to press star six to unmute yourself, anybody wish to make a comment? So I'm seeing no requests, Kirk, am I correct?
I do not appear to see anyone with the hand raised or otherwise, so if anybody does have a, a comment, they just need to just speak up, I guess, and get recognized.
Elizabeth?
Hey, thanks guys, hi Kirk, hi, Mayor, it's Elizabeth Estes. I want to thank you guys for doing this and for Cindy and Jane and Chris and, and all the work that they did putting into this, I know it was a lot to take in and a lot of opinions from a lot of different places, so I appreciate very much the effort. I appreciate also Mark mentioning the Culver Street and, and you guys knowing and realizing that all of us on there, not just the restaurants, but all of us hope we can find some solution to that, we would be willing to, to help in any way we can with whatever that is, including, you know, I mentioned to Chris, we're not even, we're not open yet, and I know we've got a, a trash problem going on with a lot of the carryout, we've got a empty trash bin behind our restaurant, if that can be used somewhere for the city, we're happy to help with that. And anything else we can do, we certainly will, and, and we'll try to get creative and come up with our own ideas as well for what we can help with the people on Culver, and maybe it's alternating, alternating sides, you know, maybe one weekend it's one side or another side, maybe we share the burden of that traffic, so anything I can do to help, and I just want to appreciate you guys, I know everyone's been waiting to see if we could make this happen, and I think it'll, it'll be a fun test, so thanks for all the work that went into it.
Yeah, thank you for all the work that you've put in, and the entire community, this is a, a great, a great job, and and I think a very effective way to deal with the situation that we find ourselves in. Any other public comment, anyone wish to make a comment? Marvin Lewis? Are you, want to be recognized?
I'm trying to unmute.
No, I do not.
I don't, I don't think he had a comment.
Okay.
No.
All right, thanks, I'm sorry, Marvin. Okay then, we'll move along, but let's have also comments. We'll start with, who's here first, let's see. Barry?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, first I wanted to make it clear, I am not the parliamentarian, I may be a student and carry the book, but we don't, the mayor is the parliamentarian of the unless somebody's appointed, so that's not me. And, but I would like to thank all of the council members for following the rules of order and not trying to jam this through without doing our homework at last meeting because it allowed our staff to craft the best recommendations and for us to study it and consider it and come up with the best solution we could. And two days, you know, we had to, we had to wait 18 hours to do this, and I know there was frustration on that, and I'm the bad boy, but this is why it all works out, thank you.
Thank you, Barry, Holly?
Um, I just, I just want to repeat what Elizabeth Estes says, I, I want to give a shout-out to Cindy and Jane and Chris because I know that there was a lot of hours put into this, and there still are a lot of hours to put into this. And I'm really thankful for the work that you did, and I'm thankful that this happened really quickly because this is exactly what the businesses asked us to do, is to provide a quick direction, so, uh, thank you.
Mark? Garnett?
Yes, following up on that, I wanted to thank all the 47 people who dialed in for this meeting, it's always wonderful to see such attendance, we would never pack that many people upstairs in our, in our city hall. So it shows true interest in what we're doing, and certainly I think probably a good number of these folks are probably business owners of one kind or another showing that their interest in what's going on, and probably their thanks for us moving forward on this. I have a great deal of trust and respect for Cindy, I know she will manage this very well because that's what she does normally, so thank you in advance, Cindy.
Jane?
I just want to say that the committee is working on things as fast as we can, we, we do want to meet with the people on Culver Street. Our next adventure will probably be setting up protocol for events, actually, we already have a protocol for events. So we want to get that into some kind of a forum so that, I don't mean a forum, I mean a form, so that we can easily hand that out to somebody that wants to create an event and have step-by-step what you have to do to create an event in your area. I also want to mention that Jen Davenport is also working on this committee with us, and if you have any, any suggestions, we are open to suggestion, and we want to do what the people in Sagatuck City want us to do, so we're moving along as fast as we can, and Cindy, thank you so much for all your help because I know you're just overburdened right now, and and hopefully you're well-paid.
Chris? You need to unmute.
I'm pretty darn careful about my role as city councilperson, so I'm gonna take just a little bit of offense to us trying to jam it through. We did not, the original idea was that we would have the discussion that we had today on Tuesday and that we would vote on the thing on Thursday. It got all turned around, but there's never been any intention on my part or any of the committee to jam something through without having adequate discussion on it. So be that as it may, it's done, let's get moving forward, and hopefully it'll just flow smooth.
Mark?
Yeah, uh, want to say thanks to the committee for a job well-done, I also think, I'd like to thank, thank Christine Murphy down at I also think, I'd like to thank, thank Christine Murphy down at Wick's Bar and Grill. I think she's the one who got the ball going rolling, if I'm not mistaken. And also, Mr. Mayor, if we could kind of shift gears a little bit. I see Scott is still online, and maybe he can give us an update on the situation down on Water and Lucy. It looks like some pumping's been going on down there, and so I'm kind of curious of an update on that.
All right, I'll allow that. Scott, would you like to give us an update, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we were pretty excited over the past couple of days. We made really good progress down there. The, the street at this point, unless, unless it rained a little bit, is for the most part dry. There were some pumps, the sump pumps that were down there that were installed by Mr. Klungle and Mr. Sharar. They had got burnt up, so we had purchased, we wanted to do this all along, but the pumps were working the way they were. But yesterday, we got, the city staff, myself actually, went up and got some new pumps and new PVC and got rid of everything that was down there and replaced it completely. And then the reason it's dry now versus the way it was before is because that, it's all due to that balloon plug that's in that drain on the east side of the street. We were able to plug that off, reseal the three catch basin structures in that intersection, and then use our trash pump to de-water, and it's really worked well so far. And so that's the update. I've been in contact with John Moxie. We're getting the ball rolling. I think within the next couple of weeks, the, the, we'll only see a contractor down there that's going to do the, install the sump pits on the east and west side of the street and install that eight-inch PVC pipe under the road. So that'll help get the water gravity-fed from the east side to the west side and then ultimately pump out into the river. We got the ball rolling. I've got the approval for the electrical work right here in front of me. That was submitted, so we're, we're all, we're in really good shape to get this stuff hopefully completed within the next two to three weeks or so.
Great. Great. Good work down there. Okay, well, everyone did an amazing job in putting all this together. Again, I compliment the committee, and I know that in our audience, there are many people who are involved in, in giving us advice and so on, so I, I thank you, and I thank you for sticking with us through this process Tuesday night and, and today. I think we have a good plan to move forward. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Chris moves, second. Jane seconds, a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? Then a roll call, please.
Peterson?
Yes.
Perplank?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes. You're adjourned. Thank you.